I'd like to call this village board meeting of February 4th, 2021 to order. With the clerk, please take the roll.
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Um, I have to read this first. The governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the February 4th, 2021 village board and committee of the whole meetings is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the February 4th, 2021 village board meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. This was signed by Linda Jackson, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, February 4th, 2021. Now, would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Zoom still hasn't figured that out yet. Community announcements. Bill, I think you're up first.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snow blow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Also, if you have a fire hydrant in your yard, please help our emergency personnel by shoveling out a three-foot radius around the hydrant. This will help our emergency personnel work quickly in the event of an emergency. The Glendale Heights Police Department wants to hear from you. Please take a moment and fill out their online survey and let them know how they can better serve you. To access the survey, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or visit their Facebook page at The safety of the Glendale Heights residents and community is the number one priority. If you have any questions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is partnering with the Northern Illinois Food Bank for a food distribution event on Saturday, February 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Cameron Park. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance, and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear face covering and remain in your vehicle. Please drive slow and follow the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We want to thank you all, thank all of these supporting organizations for your help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6070. The DuPage County Stormwater Management Plan Committee is now accepting public comment for the draft Phase 2 addendum to the Winfield Creek watershed plan and the draft Winfield Creek water quality watershed base plan. There will be a virtual information meeting on Wednesday, February 24th, at 5:00 p.m., conducted via Zoom. To submit your public comment, for more information, please visit the village's website at www.glandalehighs.org. For any questions, please contact the DuPage County Stormwater Management at 630-407-6673. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Maritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfalls. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number as 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojak?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next coffee with the mayor and village board will be Saturday, March 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Please note, due to the predicted extremely cold weather, cold temperatures, the coffee with the mayor and board scheduled for this Saturday, February 6th, has been canceled. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the county, have been an uptick, uptick, in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. Now, these platforms are not monitors 24/7, and in times of an emergency, every second counts. So please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. If you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911, and don't rely on social media. Also, in observance of President's Day, all village offices will be closed on Monday, February the 15th. So if you have any questions, please contact the village during regular business hours at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. On behalf of the entire village board, I would like to thank the Glendale Heights Jewel Osco and the DuPage County Health Department for bringing a COVID-19 vaccine clinic to the Sports Hub for our senior citizens 65 and over. Our hardworking staff at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, with help from staff at the Sports Hub, worked quickly to be able to organize this vaccine clinic and provide enough vaccines for close to 500 senior citizens over the past two days. I was excited to be able to offer this program and hope to continue to bring additional clinics to our community. Please continue to visit our website at www.glandalehighs.org for updates, and I encourage all of you to register on the DuPage County Health Department's website at www.dupagehealth.org for your best chance to receive a vaccination. We have three proclamations before us tonight. First one being a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. Next is a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Heart Month. And last, but not least, is a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as National Salute to Veteran Patients. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations?
Go for it.
No objection.
Thank you. Nicole, would you like to tell everybody about our Valentines for us?
Sure. So, the idea to collect Valentines started in the village over 20 years ago. This year was a little different than years past with being in a pandemic and following State of Illinois and Department of Public Health guidance and regulations that we didn't receive as many Valentine's Day cards as usual, but we definitely received plenty of love. Valentines were received from residents, clubs, PTOs, businesses, and organizations, and even emailed in by schools, not only in our community at large, but throughout Cook, DuPage, Kane, Kendall, and Kendall Counties. Locally, some of those that left notes or tags identifying where the cards came from were Addison PAC 420, Glenbar District 87, the Junior Women's Club, St. Matthew's Parish Faith Formation Program, the Ramsey Family, and All Peoples Church. The hundreds of Valentines collected will be mailed to Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals to remind the veterans that they are loved and appreciated. Thank you to our community for your generosity and supporting this effort year after year. Please know that wherever your Valentine ends up, and that whoever reads it, will know they are appreciated. Mayor and Board, there are Valentines in front of you. Would you mind reading them aloud?
Everybody ready to read their Valentine?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
We'll start with you, Mike.
Thank, thank you. This one's really nicely done. It says, "Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for making the stars shine so bright in our flag." And this was from Paige. She put a really nice heart on the inside of that one. And I got another one here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Be easier to hear.
All right. "Dear veteran or active-duty soldier, I am grateful for you and your service. Thank you for keeping us safe and being our heroes. Keep up the high spirits and stay safe and happy during these challenging times." And it was very nicely done, a nice way to send it, I guess, because if you could do it via email, you can do it and get it in here then. That was very nice.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you. This could drive me nuts.
Sure.
This one says, "Gotta thank you on the top. I wanted to thank you for serving this country. I also wanted to thank you for your bravery. Happy Valentine's Day from Sharon L." And there's a little thank you on the bottom. Cute.
Thank you, Pat. Chester?
That's what this one says. "Dear veterans, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you so much for your service. You have made this world a better place with your courage, sacrifice, and dedication to our country. No words will ever be enough to express how much that means. I hope you enjoy this holiday with loved ones. Stay safe. Thank you, Eva from Illinois." Very nice.
Thank you, Chester. Mary?
Mine says, "Dear veterans and active military soldiers, Happy Valentine's Day. I want to thank you for everything you have done slash are doing for our country. It means a lot to be able to know we are being protected. I want you all to know we are thinking of you guys and are so, so thankful. Hope your day is well and you stay healthy. Sincerely, Jessica."
Thank you, Mary. And mine says, "Dear vets, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you very much for your time, bravery, and sacrifice. Your continuous hard work for our country is very much appreciated. I, for one, have a lot of respect for vets like you and will forever be grateful. This country would not be the same without your service. I know times right now during COVID can be tough, but please remember we are beyond thankful for people like you fighting for our freedom. I hope you have an amazing day. Stay safe, stay happy, and best wishes to you. Thank you, Notelli." And thank you, Nicole, for all the work you put in on this project every year, because I know it means a lot to a lot of people. Next, Chief Flint. I think you have a new officer to invite in.
I do.
I'm gonna let you pronounce his last name because nobody wrote down how to pronounce it, and I didn't want to destroy it.
Just found out myself.
Okay.
Chris, you come up here. So we're here tonight to swear in Chris Dugopolski. There you go. The L is silent, Mayor.
Uh, yeah. How was that?
The L is silent. Dugopolski.
Okay.
Chris comes to us from, uh, he's born and raised over in the parks, still lives there. He's here tonight with his sister Caroline and his girlfriend Bernadette. Chris is a already certified police officer. He's coming to us from another department. Uh, he went to the police academy, Cook County Academy, in 2019. Uh, he's kind of transferring into our department. He will be starting on Monday, uh, on the street. So he's already certified, which means we save ourselves about 14 weeks of academy time.
Great.
Yeah, so big help to us getting back on the road. Fluent in Polish. One more Polish speaker for the Polish team. Uh, certified juvenile officer. He's been to a 40-hour read, interview, interrogation class already, which is a huge benefit to us as well and saving us 40 hours of training time for a class that most people go to. So kind of, we're in, you know, COVID time, and not many people here, and our kind of, our ceremonial and ritual of cake and ice cream, and I shouldn't say ice cream, but cake and, ice cream's wishful thinking, of cake and everything else, uh, isn't here. But one thing that hasn't changed, Chris, is all the people that are working right now are here to support you, and they're here to ensure that you have a very successful career, and it's, uh, you know, their opportunity to meet you and you introduce yourself to them. Uh, once this is over, you know, like I said, one of the officers will take you on a tour, you and the family. But until, can't do a tour until we get you sworn in. Village Administrator Marion is gonna be here to swear you in, one for you.
Set.
One for Mike.
I want to hear you, not me. Aye, stationing.
Aye, Christopher Dugopolski.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer?
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer?
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois?
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, Foreset?
In the county of DuPage, Foreset.
So I solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police Officer to the best of my ability?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police Officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, Chris, Chris is gonna be badge number 3012, 3012. Uh, that will be his badge for next 25 to 35 years, depending on how long he stays. So we will see him on Monday. Congratulations, Chris. And Chris, if I could just have you have one seat, and we'll take a little break after. I have one more announcement. We'll take a little break, and then if they want to get some pictures real quick, we can do a couple pictures.
Perfect.
And then we'll get him on his tour and that kind of stuff. Uh, have you seen, it's yours to keep, right?
And before we take the break, we just want to welcome you, Chris. You won't be sorry.
So we'll forego the ceremonial handshakes.
Okay, um...
Real quick, uh, he's not able to make it tonight, but, uh, I want to announce the retirement of Denny King. Denny King is retiring effective tomorrow, really.
Who is?
Denny King? Oh.
Why?
Well, um...
Uh, no.
So, Denny is fleeing Illinois to the great state of Florida, where he's gonna be hired at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff.
Wow.
Hey, good for him. God bless. It's been his dream to get to somewhere warm. I'm not gonna say he's leaving, fleeing Illinois as much as he's rejoining family in Florida, because that's where all of his family's at. But, uh, just a little recap. Uh, Denny has been with the department 24 years. Three as a CSO, 21 years as a police officer. He was hired as a CSO in 1996, uh, promoted to a police officer in 1999. Uh, he was a special operations officer for four or five years, was a Dumeag officer for five years, Dumeag supervisor for one year, and for the last five to six years, he's been at Homeland Security, working undercover at Homeland Security. Uh, so he is, well, he's Denny, so he's not here.
That was a shock.
Uh, this has been his dream.
Well, put it this way, to us, that was a shock.
In, in all fairness, Denny, this has been his dream to get to Florida, and the opportunity is there now, and that's where all of his family, his mom's moving there, all of his extended family's there. So with high school being in kind of hybrid modes, it was a great time to, uh, pack up the family, uh, and head down there.
I understand.
So, uh, God bless him and his family, and we wish him nothing but success and well wishes. Uh, you know, he's retiring tomorrow, and he leaves Sunday.
Wow.
Chief, he, he told me before he goes to Florida, he's gonna take me out to lunch again.
Well, unless you're gonna, unless you-
We're gonna have to do it now.
Unless you're gonna be in downtown St. Charles after 7:00 p.m. tomorrow night?
No.
Okay, well, you're, I, I think your lunch opportunities are-
Just give him my address. Tell him to send the money.
Oh, my gosh.
He's a good guy. You're gonna miss him.
Yes, we are. Trustee Maritato?
Uh, I could say he was, uh, a very good policeman. Very good.
Yeah, Denny was great. And I want to speak to him in past tense, because he's, he's, you know, he's moving on, you know, a testament to anybody who retires from law enforcement and takes their law enforcement job. And he's doing so, uh, down in Florida at the sheriff's office. You know, he starts, he's leaving Sunday, he starts on the 15th, I think.
Wow.
So, uh, very quick.
Okay.
Uh, you know, the, the hiring process down there is much different.
Well, we see how fast you replaced him.
Well, we're adding to the list. Well, there's, there's the list.
I know.
Uh, but anyway, I just wanted to, to kind of recognize Denny at the board meeting, uh, because he's, you know, he's not able to be here tonight, but, uh, his 24 years of service to the village, uh, should be recognized in a, in a very positive way, because he's been a very positive influence on the department and the residents and the citizen, and being a hometown boy, uh, makes it a little bit, you know, better for him to be here and then harder for him to leave, so.
You've got some huge shoes to fill.
What'd you say?
Yeah, shoes and personality, right? So-
Yeah.
Amen, amen.
Anyway, I just wanted to let the board know that it was a very quick retirement. It really just gave us two weeks, because that's how fast the hiring process happened.
Wow.
But anyway, good luck to him. God bless him and his family, and hopefully, uh, he has continued success down in Florida and, you know, it's not snowing there, so.
I don't blame him.
No.
All right, Chris, now it's all about you, kid. If we could take just five minutes?
Yep.
And we can bring Chris up here?
Uh, five-minute recess, Board?
Go for it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, and then, uh-
You're welcome.
Chris, come on up here, bring your family, we'll get some pictures, hold your badge.
I'm muting all of us.
Officer-
Call this meeting back to order. Uh, we are now on public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward.
We have received nothing via email.
Okay, and nobody's here. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. Uh, new business number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four. Um, Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
First reading is waived on items two, three, and four. Number two, an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2021-20. Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-21 is approved. Number four, is an ordinance to waive bid, authorize the execution of a notice of award, and authorize the execution of an agreement with Exxon Enterprise Incorporated for the acquisition of body cameras, fleet vehicle cameras, and TASER equipment with five-year warranties for the village's police department. Um, first reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2021-22. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee, Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-22 is approved. Number five, an ordinance to waive bid, authorize the issuance of a notice of award, and authorize the execution of an agreement with First Communications LLC for digital telephone primary rate interface circuits. This is first reading. And that brings us back to public discussion of agenda items, and since there's nobody here in the public, and you did not receive anything.
Once again, Mayor, nothing received via email, and I'm looking towards Nicole to see if there's any virtual hands up, and it doesn't look like it.
Okay. Next, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Next, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Schroder?
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Pat, it's all yours.
She forgot me. How can somebody forget me?
He did.
Tracy, you forgot Chester.
Sorry, Trustee Pojak?
What do you want? Uh, yes.
Thank you.
I didn't even notice. Sorry.
She started with Mary and ended with Pat.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting of February fourth, twenty twenty-one at, uh, seven-ten. Uh, do we need a roll call?
I don't think it's seven-ten.
Eight, oh, eight-ten.
Yeah.
Okay, eight-ten. I'm sorry, eight-ten. Do we need a roll call, Mike?
Um, just to, uh, uh, attendants, I think, to make sure that we have everybody, uh, present and can hear. Um, per the gubernatorial order.
Sure.
Okay, sure. Okay, roll call.
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Okay, now, let's go to, uh, public comments. Mike, we have anything on your?
Uh, nothing on the email, no virtual hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, we go to committee recommendations, which there isn't any. We'll go to, uh, discussion regarding vehicle leases. It would be.
Yes, I'll, I will start, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You may recall a few, well, I guess it's been over a year now. Uh, we discussed the, uh, prospect of leasing vehicles in the police department and we have received six of those vehicles thus far. Um, the process has been very good, uh, and now, before we did that any further, we wanted to come back to the board. Uh, because we did say that we were gonna start with just the police department. We're at a point, uh, at, right now, with the current fiscal year, uh, where we have budgeted for one vehicle in the community development department. Uh, the vehicle is due for replacement, needed to be replaced, um, and so we have that money budgeted. It is the same age as two other vehicles, so we have a total of three vehicles, all the same age, uh, that are due for replacement. Uh, we were looking at budgeting for each one in successive years, uh, but of course, that takes that last one out. An additional, uh, two years before we're gonna be able to replace it, uh, which obviously drives the cost of ownership up. Um, maintenance, et cetera, um, goes up as the vehicle gets older. So we're, uh, exploring the possibility of leasing for community development. Um, those three vehicles that are, are all the same age. Um, I believe, and I'm gonna turn this over to Doug in just a minute, I believe they were all two thousand and eights.
They're, yeah, they're twelve years old.
They're twelve years old. Um, so obviously, they are due to be replaced. We can do that, uh, cost-effectively using a lease with the dollars that we have budgeted for just one vehicle this year. Um, and, uh, Chief Flint, uh, the community development director, uh, finance director, public, uh. Parks and Rec director.
Rachel's there.
Rachel was there, public works director, all met with the leasing company on Tuesday. Um, to see what would be available and at this point is where I'm gonna turn that over to Chief Flint.
So I just wanna, uh, recap what the leasing is and remind everybody what leasing really is. When it comes to, uh, municipalities and it's not leasing in the term of you and I going to our dealer and getting a lease. There's, uh, we have, the asset is ours. Enterprise is more of a, a finance company, if you will. They handle all the purchasing, they handle all the registration, they handle all the deliveries, they handle all of that. And, uh, their fee is, is essentially what the, the leasing part of it is. Uh, the asset is ours, we own the vehicle, when we sell that vehicle at the three or four-year mark, or five-year mark, whatever that mark is. That asset is ours and all that money that we sell that vehicle for goes right back into our vehicle repurchase program. So there is no, i- it's not a typical lease where you trade it in and you get nothing in return for it. Um, I just want to remind the board, cause it's been a while since we've, we've gone through all this, on what it is. There's no mileage restrictions, uh, there's, uh, it's our vehicle. Uh, we put so few miles on somebody's cars, which is why we have them for twelve years, that, uh, we wouldn't hit a mileage thing on a lease. If you had a traditional lease anyway. Uh, the vehicles that are in question in co- community development, um, are in dire need of replacement. They are twelve years old, the safety features on them are twelve years old. Uh, the mechanical stuff with them are twelve years old. And they're looking to budget twenty-six thousand dollars this year for one vehicle. And through, uh, working with Enterprise, I hate calling it leasing, but working through Enterprise to purchase our vehicles. Uh, we can get three, uh, either F-150s or, uh, Ford Escapes. Or essentially the same price because of the incentives on the F-150s for less than the twenty-six thousand it would cost for one. So i- it's a way of updating our fleet efficiently and quickly. And allowing us to benefit of twelve years of technology and safety. I'm not sure that those vehicles even have airbags in them that are twelve years old. Um, but upgrading that, it also, part of the conversation was, you know, working with. Uh, Enterprise to help us get more heavier duty vehicles as well, F-250s, F-350s, F-450s. Cause that's where the program, they have a program for that as well. That also helps free up year-to-year money from budgets where you're not spending two hundred thousand dollars on a vehicle for a big heavy-duty dump truck. And plow, you might, y- you know, you, 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 it's a ten-year vehicle, you've worked that through ten years. And you really help save your budget. And i- it's a very cost-effective way for us. To, you know, maximize taxpayer money, maximize the funding that we have and help maintain, uh, our fleet.
So what essentially we're looking for from the board tonight is the approval to allow us to expand the testing that we were doing with Enterprise leasing. From the police department over to community development to replace those three two thousand and eights. Um, with new vehicles. Again, there was the two options, uh, the F-150s is a very, uh. Attractive offer, uh, basically because of the resale value a couple of years down the road. Um, there's, um, with the incentives they're getting now on these, uh, the, the cost of ownership is, is very low. Uh, when you come down to the end of the, the term.
Mike?
I would definitely be on board with the F-150s for them. I think it would be an asset we can even, I mean. Like you said, the resale value on a truck is much more than a, most of the cars will be in a couple of years. So that would be a good idea, I think. I like the F-150 idea, not because I own one, but it would be, it would be good. Um, I'm still biting my tongue on, on expanding it too far past that. You know, into parks or into streets or something like that. I'm still questioning some of that, but. We'll get to that bridge when we cross it, I guess, but right now, for spanning it with ComDev, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And next fiscal year, we will have to make that decision, whether we're going to purchase or, or, or lease going into the parks. Because Parks has put off a lot of their, uh, vehicles, uh, and there are some that definitely need to be replaced. Um, we just, Vehicle Replacement Committee goes through that on a regular basis, um. And we hash that out a, a good long time and, and we'll be presenting that again in the budget, at budget time.
Chester?
Yeah, Chief, uh, have you had any issues leasing these cars in the last year or so? Any minor issues or major issues or anything?
No, no major issues. Uh, minor issues, we always have minor issues when you have a new program, just with some communication and. Uh, just getting, you know, stuff to the vendor sometimes, but. The vendors have been great, the vendor, uh, both of our Striper and, uh, Radco, it's been seamless. Um, we don't see a bill from any of them, they all go through Enterprise, they do all the payments, because we're paying them. Uh, i- it's been pretty good. Their, the customer service from Enterprise, bar none, is the best of any vendor we have. And they reach out to us, they, I should say daily, weekly with updates. Um, I know exactly when our squads are coming in, I knew when they were ordered, I knew when they were gonna be delivered. I had, that was all, um, uh, very timely and the communication was pretty seamless.
There's a police department close to Danville or between Danville and Champaign, they have one electric vehicle. They swear by it. Have you considered it?
Electric? No. Uh, hybrids, we have four of the hybrids. And the officers tell me that the gas savings on them is pretty significant.
Oh, okay.
We haven't run the numbers, but, uh, they know how often they are supposed to fill up a car and they're not filling it up nearly as much as. As they used to, uh, so that's a good tell that, um, they're saving a lot of, of idle time and fuel. Which is what the whole point of the, the program is.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
I just have one question. You said, uh, some of these cars are from two thousand eight. Do we usually keep cars twelve and thirteen years? Isn't that a long time?
I'm not gonna answer that, Mike, you can answer that.
Well, um, as, as we've gone through the budget process, we, we evaluate these vehicles on an, on an annual basis. Um, and basically the question is, is this car gonna be able to last another year? Uh, and if we believe we can squeeze another year out of it, we try to squeeze another year out of it. Um, and while that serves us well at the time, it doesn't necessarily serve us well over time. Um, because what ends up happening then is we defer vehicles and we defer vehicles until all of a sudden, we find ourselves with. A number of vehicles that need to be replaced. And that is where the leasing kind of helps us keep those vehicles fresh. Because you're, you're in, in the chief's situation, we're leasing for four years. Um, I, I, the community development situation, I don't know the terms that you discussed on Tuesday.
Uh, well, they're, they're gonna provide out, you know, many options, well, four options, you know, one year, two year, three year, or four year. And, you know, the incentives on, the government incentives on these vehicles are pretty significant. And the, right now, on the F-150s, the two-year lease is actually your best. Value at cost per mile and then the expected return. And I don't wanna give numbers here, I'll, I'd, I'd be happy to tell you in private. But the expected return on a vehicle is pretty significant. That flows back into our asset of repurchasing. Um, because the incentives are so good in the, in the government space, uh, on those vehicles.
Thank you.
I could chime in for a moment, I'm sorry, uh, Trustee Maritato. Uh, and I think, uh, Trustee Light mentioned the F-150s, which are, are great vehicles. Staff did have a little bit of concern with some of the, uh, locations that we go into, the Ford Escape is a bit smaller. Uh, so we would like to keep both options open, if that's okay with the village board, with both the Escape and the F-150. To make sure what makes the most sense for the, the various inspectors.
Okay, I, I, any, uh, any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Is there gonna be any upfitting on these for anything in particular? No, and that's, uh, one of the better parts of the ComDev world, is that you don't have to do any. Okay, no special lights or radios or anything? Nope, and, you know, even in our new detective vehicles that we're gonna be getting through Enterprise. We're s- seriously, seriously considering not upfitting them either. Um, one, we don't need the radios anymore, because we have radios that work, we, all of our radio channels are on our belt. And, uh, with the way that traffic is right now and opticons, and we don't have opticon systems in our squad cars. Uh, you know, going, detectives aren't going code anymore, they don't need lights and sirens as much as they used to, and there's other alternatives out there. So, w- we don't need to spend the three thousand dollars to outfit a vehicle like we used to. Um, and we shouldn't, because then the resale of that asset is better, if we don't outfit it. So we're, we're looking at all the options to be the most cost-efficient, uh, cost-effective and then get a, the best return for us. Um, to replenish the fleet and, you know, ultimately have turnover of asset. To get our cost of vehicles down significantly.
I could add to that, of course, safety is a significant concern and we're, we're very safety-conscious. So we do have lights, but they are actually the suction cup lights and we've had them for a few years on the community development vehicles. So there'll be no permanent impact, so we will still have the safety lights, but they can just be taken out of one car and moved to the next car.
Good.
Joey, why, why would you need a 150 for your department?
Uh, we really don't, uh, the, the, we have one Ford Escape right now with, that is the, the best, that's, uh. Two or three years old and that is working very well. It's really all about the financial. The benefit of a F-150 is a little bit better than the Ford Escape. But I think the Ford Escape is a, a good vehicle for community development overall. So we'll look at whatever works the best financially.
Trustee Maritato, there's a ten-dollar per month difference in the cost between an F-150 and a Ford Escape.
Well, the, the only thing, the only thing I'm thinking about is, if, if you're gonna go with a 150. You might as well go with a four-by-four. And get it set up with a plow, so in the winter time, we can use that truck, instead of just driving around in a regular F-150. Doing nothing. We can use that truck in the winter time.
Now we're talking.
No?
I am, I'm on board a hundred percent.
I mean, I mean, I, I think that makes sense.
But, you know, what's, what's the best use for them? Uh, but I'm on board a hundred percent to evaluate all the options that are available for us. To make us the most cost, to do vehicle purchasing in the most cost-effective, cost-efficient, that works best for the village.
Right, I mean, in winter time, we can use it.
Yep.
Right, one of the issues with putting the plow on the, the vehicle is then it impacts the sale. When it's time to get out, finish the, the lease, then there's a sale issue.
Well, there's, there's also.
It's a great idea, we just need to figure out the best financial overall.
There, there's also an issue with it, is you're, you're taking, um, inspectors who don't drive plows. And are already concerned about the size of the vehicle and you're adding another few feet to the front of it, um, with a plow on it.
He don't have to drive it, I mean, we can find somebody else to drive the truck in the winter time, when it snows out. I mean, that's, that shouldn't be a problem, a pickup truck.
Trustee Maritato, we'll, we'll bring some options to the board, if that's okay with you guys. And do what's in the best interest of, of everybody. Uh, but, you know, there's, there's literally a ten-dollar difference between the Escape and the F-150. And the resale is about ten grand more on the F-150 versus the Escape.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying to, I mean, to benefit the village, that truck, I mean, it could be used, you know.
More than eight hours a day.
More than eight hours a day. It's an extra truck. I mean, that's how I look at it, but, I don't know.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Pat?
Bill?
Yeah, what's the difference in cost of operation between the Escape and the 150?
The, uh, you mean the overall cost?
Overall cost, mileage, uh, tires, uh, the whole shebang.
Well, uh, I, I don't have that in front of me, the, the monthly, uh, net cost is ten dollars. Between, the two difference between the Escape and the, um, Ford F-150.
Okay, but I'm imagine, I'm assuming that an Escape is gonna be more fuel efficient than a, uh, F-150 would be.
Uh, not significantly. And the, and you're looking at, you know, tires, brakes, and oil changes. That our mechanics do. That's really all the maintenance that we have, because they're under warranty for three years or five years, depending on what the warranty is. But it's, it's tires, brakes, and maintenance, so they only put five to six thousand. But it's it's tires, brakes, and maintenance, so they only put five to six thousand miles a year on a vehicle in ComDev. And we're not looking at any tire changes, we're not looking at brakes, we're, you know, it's essentially oil changes and inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so what are you, what are you looking for, Mike? Just?
Uh just a an an approval from the board to allow us to move forward with um. Potentially leasing vehicles uh further than what we first said was a pilot program for uh enterprise for the police department.
Okay, I need a motion.
Move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
Second.
I don't even think we need to.
I don't, I don't think it needs to be the board, it just needs to be a a.
I think it's more just guidance.
Yeah.
Correction.
Okay, then a motion to, let them go ahead.
Okay, we need a roll call?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, roll call.
Uh President Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Doug, for the uh. Is there any other business?
Yes, there is, uh attorney Starino has bringing something up, but he's on mute right now.
Still on mute.
Hi, Mike, you still on view?
I'm mute.
Don, you're still muted, Don, there you go.
There you go.
Sorry, um so i- it appears before trustee Maritato. Should um adjourn this meeting that maybe an item in the board agenda. Uh was not uh covered. Um I think it's item three. Um and the way to handle that is pretty, pretty simple, all we need is a um. A motion to reconsider the adjournment of the uh regular meeting. And then we can handle this other item that's on our board agenda.
What did we miss?
Uh number three was not approved. Uh it was read, uh first reading was waived, but it was not um approved by the board.
Under new business?
Correct.
Huh.
It wasn't.
You're positive?
Um yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No, um eh before you do that, Pat, could you ask for a motion to reconsider the adjournment of the regular meeting of the village board?
Okay, I need a a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Reconsider. Bill? The adjournment.
To reconsider the adjournment of the regular board meeting.
Second.
You need a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
So we're back in the um the regular board meeting.
I didn't even read that.
Um and item three.
Go ahead, mayor, item three in new business.
Okay, new business, number three. An ordinance to amend section four dash three dash thirteen. Entitled number of licenses of chapter three entitled liquor control. Of title four entitled business and license registrations. Of the village code of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one. Trustee Schroder.
So moved.
Second.
Does anybody want to discuss it? Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one is approved.
Here, you can adjourn this meeting again for the second time. A motion to adjourn.
You have to adjourn the meeting, not me.
Huh?
Mike had his hand up.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We can hear you.
Sorry. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned again.
We're back to Pat, Pat, you can adjourn your meeting now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You got to adjourn yours.
I'll make a, I'll make a.
You can't make a motion.
I need a motion to adjourn, Sharon?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.